Decisions, hard decisions sometimes, difficult. The decisions that care for us and provide for us, we thank you for their care. Lord, I want to pray especially for the citizens in our community who have lost their homes and still underwater, many of them, I'm sure, lost almost everything. And Father, I just thank you for our great community that pulls together to share with one another and God, we pray that they would, these folks would feel our prayers and our encouragement and our generosity. Lord, I pray you would give them comfort and peace and hope through all of this and God, you would restore their possessions, what they need for life, and also just give them some encouragement through this. Father, I pray that you would bless this evening and the business meeting, things that are said and done would honor you. I pray for unity and cooperation with one another. Pray for your wisdom, God, that would lead this court to make wise decisions. And thank you that we have the freedom to worship, speak freely of you in our community. I pray all these things in Christ's name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Pastor Nation, and I'd like to thank you and all Journey Church does, including Journey provisions, to help folks. We really appreciate that.
Glad to do it.
Thank you.
For our community, thank you.
Thank you. If you're able, please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the life of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to open up the floor for any public comment, any person wishing to address the court or the public. The floor is yours. Yes, please approach the podium and state your name.
Lorraine Garkovich, and I live out on McCown's Ferry Road. And I'm just kind of speaking about some of the issue, one of the issues before us and has been before the court and the planning commission. And it's about the question of how do we protect our agricultural land and our agricultural heritage for the future? I want to suggest that everybody, I'm sorry, I don't have a color printer, so I had to find a place to do it, and I've only got one. If you do a little search with the term "map of karst areas" in Woodford County, Kentucky, this is what you get, okay? Do you see, everybody, that it's all red? All red, the entire county. And that's because red indicates intense karst geography, okay? And then if you go on to that and click on a map, you get in, the dark red is intense, okay? Reason why I bring this up is because there is a relationship between karst geology and all of our water and the quality of our groundwater. And karst is also very fragile and very susceptible to, easily susceptible to pollution. It is why many of us years ago, for those who are old enough to remember, fought the proposed Bluegrass Pipeline that was going to run sludge through our county, through some of the heaviest karst areas, operated by a company that had many spills all around the country before. And they kept telling us, well, it's okay because A, it won't be an accident, but even if there is, we can fix it. Well, you can't fix what's broken when you're talking about karst geology, because that, whatever goes onto the soils goes straight into the groundwater. And our groundwater resources are some of the most important resources that we have and is the basis, I think, as many people would tell us if you go on the tours of the bourbon industries, that it's the reason why bourbon is so common here in this country, in this state. They are very fragile and they are vulnerable environments, and they are vulnerable to pollution, to water withdrawals, and changes in land use. And if you go to that, you know, Google that first source I said to you, that it comes up with a report or a presentation by the Kentucky Geological Survey, and this is what they say. Karst terrain affects the lives of many Kentuckians every day. Most people don't realize they are affected because the costs are hidden in the form of higher taxes and the increased cost of living. Often enough, the consequences of living in a karst terrain directly affect people's lives. Of vital concern is protection of groundwater resources. Many communities in Kentucky were established near Karst Springs to take advantage of the reliable water supply, but because of pollution, most of those town springs have since been abandoned as a source of water. Factories and homes built over filled sinkholes, which are a outcome of karst geology, may be damaged as the fill is transported out of the sinkhole and the soil cover collapses. Structures built on sinkholes are often vulnerable to flood damage. And finally, I just want to point out that, do a quick search after you want to do the one on karst in Woodford County, and do a quick search on using this phrase, septic systems in karst areas. If you just glance through the research that's in popular science articles when you do that, what you're going to, what will appear will help you understand why significant increases in the number of septic systems in intense karst regions such as Woodford County should be a situation of great concern. We are, we have been facing for several months now, a couple of years we've been talking about this, a land use policy decision that affects those who live and work here right now. But we are also choosing to make a decision with intergenerational consequences. Small lots on large homes, with large homes of multiple bedrooms and bathrooms and even pools are not really sustainable without exceptional care by the homeowner in an intense karst region. Simply look at Spencer County, this goes way back, but I was working as an extension specialist that year, in those years, which is adjacent to Louisville, that in the 1980s saw very rapid growth of rural subdivisions with all the homes on septic systems. In the 1980s, 90s, the EPA and Kentucky Department of Natural Resources took action to force the local government there to extend sewer lines to those dispersed residences, at great cost to local residences and affecting the local government's financial health for a long time. Why? Because septic system failures and other problems related to septic systems on karst regions led to contamination of the water supply. Just remember that the decisions we make today have ripple effects into the future and on to those who come to live here long after each of us is gone. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Garkovich.
I even had that written down.
Thank you, thank you.
I'm so excited. I managed to get that done.
Are there any other individuals that wish to submit public comment? We will take that and submit that for the record. Thank you, Madam Clerk. Thank you, Ms. Garkovich. Seeing no other public comment, we'll move to the approval of the minutes of the regular meeting of March 25th. Are there any additions or corrections regarding the minutes? Seeing none, seeing no comments, there aren't, are there any objections to approving same? Also seeing none, I'll approve the minutes without objection. We have no good at the county program, but I do anticipate that we have one at our next scheduled meeting. Committee reports. The Budget and Finance Committee of the Fiscal Court met prior to this meeting to discuss several items. The first item was the Fiscal Court's 2025-26 budget. We accepted for the record the detention center budget, which was presented to the court and accepted as part of the budget timeline and pursuant to statute on or before April 1st. Let the record reflect that the Fiscal Court accepted and presented the detention center budget and discussed it in the Budget and Finance Committee meeting. We also had before us the Coroner's Budget. Director Bailey presented the EMS preliminary budget, as did Chair McDaniel for the Recycling and Solid Waste Department. The next item was an indigent burial fund request. It was noted that the Blackburn and Ward Funeral Home quote included costs for court costs, and therefore, without the court costs associated, the $1,000 quote was $750 for cremation. There was a motion to recommend for the full Fiscal Court to accept the quote from Blackburn and Ward Funeral Home in the amount of $750 and to pay the legal fees associated with filing an indigent burial request in District Court. That motion was approved, and that recommendation is before the full Fiscal Court to accept that recommendation of the Budget and Finance Committee. Is there a motion to accept that recommendation? Motion by Squire Varner, second by Squire Taylor. I'd like to open up the floor for any discussion. Seeing none, all those in favor, please vote and signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. And that motion carries. We also made a motion and approved a motion to accept the quote from Furniture Solutions in the amount of $7,629.63 for filing and storage at the Woodford County Government Center. Is there a motion to accept that request, or accept that recommendation from the Budget and Finance Committee? Motion by Squire Taylor, second by Squire Brown. Seeing no discussion, all those in favor, please vote and signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. And the motion carries unanimously. The next item was the road materials bids. The Budget and Finance Committee recommended the full Fiscal Court to accept the bids for the road materials as recommended by road supervisor Bo Wilson, exclusive of the fluids bids. Is there a motion to adopt the recommendation of the committee? Motion by Squire Carl, second by Squire Varner. Seeing no further discussion, all those in favor, please vote and signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. The motion carries unanimously. There was also a motion, in light of the prior motion, to authorize the rebidding and advertisement for road fluids for the Woodford County Road Department as recommended by the road supervisor and the Budget and Finance Committee. Is there a motion to accept said recommendation? Motion by Squire Carl, second by Squire Gentry. Seeing no discussion, all those in favor, please vote and signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. The motion carries. The next item was a motion, or excuse me, a recommendation to accept the quote from Jose Hernandez for a concrete slab at the solid waste and recycling center to accommodate in the burn box in the amount of $21,900. That was a unanimous motion recommended to the Fiscal Court from the Budget and Finance Committee. Is there a motion to accept same? Motion by Squire Gentry, second by Squire Taylor. All those in favor, please vote and signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. And the motion carries. This pitch of Woodford County made a recommendation to the Fiscal Court regarding the batting and hitting complex at Woodford County's Chandler Field out of the county park, and the Budget and Finance Committee recommended to the full Fiscal Court to authorize the county attorney to work on that lease and to have those discussions with this pitch organization. Is there a motion to adopt same?
Motion.
Motion by Squire Gill, second by Squire Taylor. Seeing no discussion, all those in favor, please vote and signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. And the motion carries. The Fiscal Court, or excuse me, the Budget and Finance Committee recommended to the Fiscal Court several items, including the motions to conditionally approve young and new farmer grants for applicants number three, 11, and 23, and to approve a dispersment for the application number 10 that was already conditionally approved. Is there a motion to adopt the recommendations regarding the young and new farmer grant programs as recommended by the Budget and Finance Committee?
Motion.
Motion by Squire Varner.
Second.
Second by Squire Taylor. All those in favor, please vote and signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. And the motion carries unanimously. The next item was a recommendation that we allocate funds in the amount of $10,000 to the Woodford Foundation for emergency temporary housing for flood relief. That was unanimously recommended to the full Fiscal Court. Is there a motion for approval of same? Motion by Squire Gentry, second by Squire Gill. Seeing no other discussion, all those in favor, please vote and signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. And the motion carries. We also, we also made a recommendation to approve the, to authorize the bid process for the printers for the election equipment. Is there a motion to approve that recommendation to the full Fiscal Court? Motion by Squire Carl, second by Squire Varner. All those in favor, please vote and signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. And the motion carries. Madam Clerk, we may have made some additional motions. Do you have those? That's what we have. So, just for everybody who's following along, the Budget and Finance Committee went and vetted and worked on those particular motions as recommendations to the full Fiscal Court. For additional information on that, you can refer to our Budget and Finance Committee prior here, too. But otherwise, these are fairly routine actions of the Fiscal Court. That was the total sum of the Budget and Finance Committee. We will meet again prior to our next meeting to continue our work on the budget. Thanks to the Treasurer and everyone else for all of their hard work on the budget. We'll move on to reports. Madam Treasurer, I will, would you like to approach for your report, or you want me to handle that for you? She wants me to handle it. We did discuss the Treasurer's actions in the Budget and Finance Committee, so this should be fairly straightforward. First of all, there is no financial report due to quarter end, but we do need a motion to accept the quarterly report of the Fiscal Court for quarter ending March 31, 2025. Motion by Squire Carl, second by Squire Gentry. All those in favor, please vote and signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. The motion carries. The next item is a motion to authorize a letter sent to the Auditor of Public Accounts to request the use of an independent audit CPA firm for our 2025, 2024-25 Fiscal Court audit. Motion by Squire Carl.
Second.
Second by Squire Varner. Are there any questions there on? Seeing none, all those in favor of the motion on the table, please vote and signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. And that motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Madam Treasurer. Now, I would like to call Emergency Management Director Drew Chandler to present on the flood update for the court. Thank you, Director Chandler.
Thank you, Judge. I've got to apologize for everybody that's after me on the agenda tonight, and also for my inability to answer all your calls. I'll just say it's a good thing we don't pay for cellphone usage per text and minute Judge, the event that we're dealing with now really unfolded starting on March 31st and April 1st with a weather system that started with several rounds of severe weather and then it rained, and it rained, and it rained, and it rained. Woodford County had some wind stuff, but we got expanded into a tornado watch area in the early morning hours of Wednesday, the 2nd. We opened the courthouse community room so people could come in and feel safe if they didn't at home. Our dispatchers, we did have several tornado warnings come through. They notified the public in the middle of the night. The notifications work just like they're supposed to, and fortunately, we really didn't have any reports of severe storm damage. But then, as I said, it rained, and it rained, and it rained. Friday, we received notification about Dix Dam doing controlled spills from Lake Harrington, which, there's some science behind it that I won't get in here till today. It does affect the river, but it doesn't affect the river at the same time. They only put into the river from Lake Harrington what would flow into the Kentucky River from the Dix River if the lake weren't there with the dam. So, what's flowing into Lake Harrington is flowing over the spill gates into the Kentucky River. So, there's a lot of misconceptions. We've encouraged our partners at LG and EKU who own and operate Dix Dam to work on their public education because the rumor mill actually occupied a lot of our time a few days ago with some, it may have even been intentional misinformation. Seeing the forecasted crest of the Kentucky River, it levels similar to the flood that occurred in February, we proactively activated our sheltering agreement with the Red Cross, and they are set up at the senior center and have been since Saturday. The interest there has been pretty low, but I feel strongly that once the water recedes and folks start to get in their homes over the next couple of days, they're going to realize that they can't stay there. So, there will be more interest in the shelter. Also, a lot of the residents, you know, the river community, we talk about being a very resilient bunch, some of them are going to run out of options. They're staying with friends and family, they've made their own arrangements at hotels or Airbnbs. There's faith-based organizations, there's non-governmental entities that are helping them. There are limits to that kind of assistance. So, we're keeping the shelter operation going as long as is needed until we have some solutions for some short-term temporary housing for folks, or longer-term temporary housing. Sunday, we had a real concern come up when the river continued to rise and the forecast increased to over the 1978 historic record. There's cascading effects that happen. One of those is the inundation of water at the Versailles intake, which is near Tyrone, and the police department flew their drone down there, and it looked like we were going to take on water based on the projected crest. So, they proactively put as much water into the storage system as they could, and then they had KU disconnect the power to mitigate any damages from having water get in the pump station while it was still energized. That proved to be a wise move. Unfortunately, it scared a lot of folks with the threat of faucets running dry, but the water system was never at risk. There's an interconnect with a neighboring utility system that, once we got all our facts together, they were able to supply us more than a million gallons per day than what our average consumption was. So, the water system was never at risk. There were some touch and goes while we were trying to do all our fact-finding. Nonetheless, we did a water distribution event. We ended up with approximately 120 pallets of packaged potable water out at the county park, and we had a distribution event yesterday. And today, we have some left. We'll keep some of that on hand, return the rest of it to State DOC Resource Management Group because there's other communities that will need that now that our system has normalized. Yesterday, kind of getting into that, the water system was restored. We got a great report from Mitzi Delius, the utilities manager for the city, that the storage tanks are where they need to be, pressures are optimized. There was one boil water advisory here in town, but that was due to an unrelated water main break near you, Judge K. The river did crest yesterday morning, .23 feet short of the 1978 record. If you've not seen any of your video or images, there's a lot of water, and it won't recede to a point where our public agencies can get in there safely without high-axle vehicles to get in and start cleaning the roads off so the residents can return and start taking inventory. Today was really about transitioning into recovery, and what, that transition is sort of a semi-formal process where we've done everything to rescue as many people as we can. So, that really ended yesterday, and today's focusing on looking ahead. So, there's some things that have transpired even while the court was in committee meetings leading up to the formal Fiscal Court meeting, working with the Treasurer and the HR manager, and just really all of county government. Some of the missions that occurred, our fire personnel, which, you know, rescue gets lumped in with fire, so Woodford County Fire and Versailles Fire, they performed, and this number may change as they finish up their documentation, 33 evacuations, and that's humans. There were a lot of pets as well. There was one actual hair-raising water rescue in the northern end of the county on Brown's Mill. An individual drove around a barricade, thought they could drive through the water, the car became buoyant, you know the rest. Unfortunately, there's, there has been some loss of life in scenarios across the state associated with this event, but that, that individual was extremely lucky. We've got the sheltering operation, and I mentioned there hasn't been a lot of interest yet, but we do anticipate that changing as folks realize that they can't stay in their home. The water distribution event, we ended up with six truckloads. Rick Wade, there's actually, he had to take a cat nap earlier. He was slinging pallets of water just as quick as people could drive through. It was a big lift metaphorically and physically. So, that's kind of what happened in the past. Stuff that's ongoing now, our animal control is near capacity with pets that are displaced. She says we have room, you heard it here. Emily's done a stellar job taking in stuff that we wouldn't normally have. Our damage assessment... that we wouldn't normally have. Our damage assessment process, Kenneth, GIS, we gave him some parameters and he was able to identify 250 residences that are definitely impacted or have a high likelihood of being impacted that we can't physically get to yet. Those are on the state damage assessment map, so the governor is not waiting on us to go door-to-door. I found out later this afternoon that Woodford County is on the list to be part of the initial declaration request to FEMA. Of those 250, they are all categorized as major, which means people can't live there while there are repairs going on. The, some of the properties, unfortunately, depending on the construction type, they may need to be, or they may be beyond repair. It may be a demolish and rebuild, which creates a whole other host of complications when we're talking about new construction or replacement construction. The Sheriff's Office and the Police Department have an ongoing safety and security mission. Judge K. and I were down in Clifton earlier and some of the residents, there were some strangers wandering around. And our Sheriff's Office is a, they're a pretty good deterrent from folks being in an area where maybe they shouldn't be. We're looking at infrastructure restoration. The Road Department is planning roadway cleanups. We're trying to coordinate with the utility operators. They're kind of inaccessible because their scope of damage is well beyond Woodford County. The problem's going to be, and in KU specifically, they are going to make their power grid safe before they re-energize the areas that were deliberately turned off. And what that means is when they send somebody to put eyeballs on a property, if it's obviously wet or had been wet, they're going to pull the meter and they're going to go door-to-door and do that. And the homeowner or the renter, whoever the responsible party is, is going to have to likely get that inspected. And then KU will come out and put the meter back in and they can get power. So people are going to be trying to clean up without electric, unfortunately. So we're trying to figure out the optimal way to get the electrical inspector into the affected areas once repairs have been done, to just let everybody know when they'll be nearby and maybe they can hang out there instead of bouncing around call-to-call. We're working on, and Jordan has a big role in this, our Fiscal Court Clerk, we're creating a flood resource page on the county website. Before I leave the building tonight, that'll be published and ready for sharing on social media. And we've got stuff from the PVA office. We have information for the Red Cross Aid, donations and volunteer management. So anybody that's got something that needs to be shared with flood survivors will be on this page to include the disaster survivor assistance information, once we get that from FEMA. We are working on creating a survivor registry of sorts. It will likely be a text, something like flood to a specific number, and people can opt in to receive notifications when we update the flood resource page or when the declaration has been announced. Folks can start to make their appointments with the FEMA representatives that are already in Woodford County at the Senior Center. And then the other big lift is the volunteer and donation management. We have some community groups that are just gangbusters right now. There've been several drives. There's, I understand, four truckloads that are staged and ready to be taken back into the area as quickly as Thursday if the roads are suitable for normal vehicles to be on. And that's everything from cleaning supplies to some sandwiches so people can stay there. The Health Department is planning to do, folks can go there at any time during the regular business hours and get a T-DAP or a tetanus booster, but they will actually be down there with their vaccine van if folks need a tetanus booster, which we highly recommend if you're even volunteering in the area. Our future missions, and these are big ones, and I've got two requests of you tonight that I'll get to as I wrap up. The establishment of a short-term housing task force. FEMA's model is to, if somebody can't stay in their home, if they meet all the criteria, FEMA will help them rent a property. We would really like for people to have the option to stay in Woodford County, but as we all know, inventory isn't a premium, and that's going to be very difficult. So I got to talk with some of my counterparts in other communities that have been through something similar to this previously, and the, based on what I described, they suggested that we go the route of the RV-style, short-term housing solution, which the good news is, I believe that is a state mission, so we won't be fully responsible for that. But we've got to identify areas of where it's suitable. And it's not just about picking a spot. We need to make sure it's got convenient access to utilities, that there's not any zoning considerations or environmental factors. And it's a complicated thing to go through, but that's what the task force will do. Debris management is going to be a massive challenge for us. We're narrowly after a flood like we did in February. The county will provide dumpsters and we get mixed debris. It goes to a landfill and we put another dumpster down there and fill that one up. With the amount of debris that we're looking at, obviously, we'll meet the threshold for federal recovery for this type of work. We have to play by all their rules. And if you've ever worked with the federal government on anything environmental, you know the rules are far and wide. So our debris will have to be monitored closely because there's a lot of fraud associated with disaster debris. It will have to be separated. We can't mix construction debris with white debris, which is appliances, with household hazardous waste. It's all got to be categorically separated and go to the right kind of disposal, which appliances largely can be recycled. Construction debris will end up in a landfill. Hazardous waste will end up in special landfills, et cetera, et cetera. That's going to be a big lift. Our infrastructure repairs, the water's still up, so we don't know the condition of roads and culverts and drainage. There are some areas in the county where there's private crossings that aren't necessarily in the right-of-way. But if there is a public safety access issue, so if a driveway is washed out, maybe a culvert, the county can write a public assistance project with FEMA to repair a private driveway. Normally, we're not allowed to work on private property, but if there's a public safety access issue, we are allowed to write something like that. So we'll just kind of have to see as we can get in and actually put our own eyeballs on it. And then cost recovery is a big one. This is going to impact Woodford County for quite a while. Certainly, the current fiscal year and next, but the one after that, too. And it won't be that we'll be spending money for that long, but on a disaster this big, it is a prolonged period of time to establish all your documentation and then get reimbursed. With the current administration things that are going on in Washington, there's a lot of uncertainty with FEMA and DHS. I think there was some legislation introduced yesterday by Senator Tillis out of North Carolina that would move FEMA out from homeland security up to a cabinet-level agency. It's hard to tell what that's going to do to timelines on reimbursement, but we're monitoring that closely, too. So all of that to say, everybody's still working together. We're under an emergency declaration and have been for several days, both the county and the two cities. And I've got two requests for you tonight. One of them is to allow the Treasurer to establish a special fund in the budget specifically for flood recovery. And I believe she's, since we talked earlier, she's had the ability to work with the DLG and get some clarity on their guidance pertaining to that. And then to transfer proactively a half million dollars into that fund. So some of the expenditures that we have incurred leading up to this point will have before the next Fiscal Court meeting. As you know, we're not allowed to obligate dollars that aren't in the budget. So we would have to transfer money into that fund to be able to do some of the equipment rentals that Bo has lined up, overtime for departments and that sort of thing. So that's the first request. And Judge, I don't know if you want me to do both of them at the same time or take this one up.
Let's go ahead and ask if there's any questions regarding that recommendation from the Emergency Management Director, as supported by the Treasurer. Any questions there on? Is there a motion to approve, saying?
Motion.
Motion, Biscquire Taylor. Second, Biscquire Carl. Any questions? Any comments? Any additional discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please vote and signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Madam Clerk, do you have that? All right.
Judge, the second request, at the beginning, I apologize for just simply, my phone's ringing up here now. The deputies in the Emergency Management Department are part-time salaried. And I'd like to get permission to allow Teresa to work out the details, to allow them to work more than their salaried hours at their established hourly rate, specifically for this disaster. So this would not be a permanent, ongoing. It would just be for this initial recovery period until we get back to what our normal is post-disaster.
And so, Director Chandler, let me add that you and I have discussed this at length and we've worked with the Human Resources Manager. We need to figure out the exact status change that would happen to each employee that you've recommended, Johnny, Brian, and Russ in particular, and also a possible part-time position for Emily Viveros, who is a former part-time employee that we've activated in the emergency and would like to continue to utilize as additional resource. The department is overextended. Drew has been working his tail off and doing a tremendous job at it. I think it's a great idea to move these folks into a position where they can work as many hours as needed, including overtime. So my recommendation would be for us to adopt the recommendation of the Emergency Management Director to allow for the appropriate status changes for the part-time EM deputies and include a part-time position for Emily Viveros, which will be reflected in a personnel order that you'll either approve via email or at our next Fiscal Court meeting retroactively so that they can continue their work. So that's, does anybody have any questions on what that request is? Then if there's not, I would entertain a motion to allow us to, upon the consultation of the Human Resources Manager, that we allow the part-time deputies to have a status change, which will allow us to affect this and add an additional part-time position specifically for Emily Viveros. Motion, Biscquire Kelly Carl. Second, Biscquire Lyles Taylor. I'd open up the floor for additional discussion. Seeing none, yes, Biscquire Taylor, you're recognized.
I just, honestly, it's such an important work. It really wouldn't matter on my vote, but I want to clarify for folks maybe that don't know. These would likely be a part of our costs for reimbursement with FEMA as well. I just want to clarify that for folks.
It multifaceted, so FEMA's got different categories for public entities like us. Depending on what they're working on, their time might be reimbursable at 100% or the normal cost share is 75-25. There's also management costs. So let's say, and I don't say this number to scare anybody because it could reach that, let's say it's a million-dollar disaster. We could get 5% on top of that back just for managing, shuffling paperwork and doing all the requirements along the way. So the CAT-Z costs would potentially cover that. So I want to be as fiscally responsible as possible, and the transfer that you authorized the Treasurer to make is just proactive. We have not spent nearly that much money, so I don't want to give a false impression. But we will do everything that we can to recover every dollar that we can.
I'm confident in that, and I appreciate you and your team. Biscquire Gentry. No. Let me also add that, so Director Chandler and the Emergency Management Department need these personnel resources direly because we are facing the largest disaster we've ever seen, at least in this period of time. The only thing that maybe rivals it is the '03 ice storm, maybe? And I wouldn't even say that it's...
We didn't have a whole, the power, we didn't have the infrastructure damage to homes with that one. It was, the power was out. It was inconvenient and uncomfortable, but the debris that we're talking, just imagine, we're talking about buyouts. We're talking about homes being razed. It's going to be a long process. I want to just set expectations, but also not scare anybody. On our leadership call this morning, County Attorney, we're working on the script for just a recorded video that kind of explains the process for disaster recovery for individuals and families and what's available, what we anticipate to come. Just trying to get ahead of it. I think there's a lot of people that are scared right now. They're scared that they can't get back to their home yet. They're not sure what they're going to expect. We have some imagery that's just, it really tugs at the heart. There's structures that you can't see. There's structures that all you see is the roof, water lines that are up on shingles. I mean, it's just, it's not supposed to happen. So...
And yeah, I agree wholeheartedly. And I would say that even in the absence of reimbursement, that we need this to take care of our citizens. And therefore, we've got a motion on the table. Any additional discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please vote and signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. And that motion carries. Mr. Director, we also need a motion to approve the revised annual standing order of April 8th, 2025 to include overtime due to the recent floods. We need, you all have the standing order in front of you. We need to approve that as presented so that we can take care of overtime issues that have occurred and will arise. So is there a motion to approve the annual standing order as presented?
Motion.
Motion, Biscquire Gentry. Second, Biscquire Brown. Are there any questions on that? Seeing none, all those in favor, please vote and signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. The motion carries. Director Chandler, let me, let me share that one of the things that we have seen are real-life heroes in this time. The work that Bo Wilson has done individually and as the leader of the Road Department is nothing short of extraordinary. Sheriff Johnny Wilhoy has been in the flood zone, protecting and serving in a way that I think anybody should be extremely proud of. Our Sheriff and our Sheriff's Office, our deputies have been there day and night. You yourself, Mr. Director, have performed admirably, and I commend you in all your expertise and hard work, your diligent nights, your compassion and care for people. There are few communities in this state that have an accessible Emergency Management Director that people in the community know and trust and believe. And he's always there and will never let us down. And he's working extremely hard and probably needs some more hours of sleep and some points, some time off. The heroes of Woodford Fire and Versailles Fire working together is one of the most encouraging things I've seen in my time as an elected official. To see children pulled from rescue boats on Sunday morning is one of the most, it tugs at your heartstrings, as Director Chandler said, but they're there for our people. We know of the, we're not calling them rescues. They were evacuations, but in the dead of night, in the dark of night, with six feet of water in people's homes, them being ushered into rescue boats and pulled out of that water, we're so fortunate and blessed that there was no loss of life. But Woodford Fire and Versailles Fire are the best, and they serve together and they served our community in a way that we're very blessed and fortunate to have them. Just the unity and working together of all our departments and agencies of government, city and county, our nonprofits, our churches, our businesses, everybody working together, everybody sacrificing to conserve water, neighbors helping neighbors. The stories are endless. This is why Woodford County is the greatest community on the face of the earth, in fact, the universe, because we have the best people who rise to the challenge when things are at their worst. Woodford County and our people are at their best. And as Director Chandler has said, the hard part is ahead. The challenges, the obstacles, the difficulty is ahead. And I'm very confident that this Fiscal Court will do what we need to support all the efforts to take care of our people. I want to give a big shout-out to Debbie Tichner and the Salvation Army, Danny Bradley and the Woodford Foundation, the Red Cross, and I could go on and on and on. But we really have a great team of everybody working together in our community. And it may sound cliche at this time. It may sound something like we've heard, but we will get through this together. And it's obvious that we are together and unified. So, Director Chandler, I want to thank you, you and your team, Johnny, Russ, and Brian, for all that you're doing. So Director Chandler, I want to thank you, you and your team, Johnny, Russ, and Brian, for all that you're doing. I want to thank everybody who's put in hours and hours of time and helping folks. Our EMS, our paramedics and our EMTs taking care of folks. All of our departments and agencies, Michelle at the jail and our community service inmates, the Ricks in maintenance and Jerry. All the departments of government, the second floor team for helping support administratively. And this fiscal court for doing what it takes to hold the gold standard and what it means to respond and serve our people. So thank you. I'd open up the floor for any questions or comments of the director on the flood report. Yes, Mr. County Attorney, sir.
Just want to say, first of all, Drew, thank you for responding so quickly to put this information link together. And we assume everyone knows, but I think we, for those watching now and listening now or who may do so later, so they would go to the Woodford County Government homepage at woodfordcountyky.gov.
That's correct.
And that's where that will be available for them.
Yep, Madam Fiscal Court Clerk already has. It's at the very top thing of the page with a big red button. And before I leave tonight, the actual flood page. Right now, it points to a page that's got weather and transportation status and that sort of thing. But the page is nearly ready to publish and updated that link at woodfordcountyky.gov.
Thank you.
And then the emergency banner.
And there it is.
Great job, Madam Court Clerk. Other questions or comments? Thank you, Mr. County Attorney. Thank you, Director Chandler.
Judges, if there's no comments, I'd like to close by saying that throughout this event, there haven't been any reports of injuries and there have been no fatalities. And I think that's the best news of the night.
Thank God, and thank you.
With that, I'd ask to be excused from the remainder of the meeting.
All those in favor, signify by saying aye. Thank you, Director Chandler.
Thank you all. If you need anything, we're downstairs.
Thank you, thank you, thank you. So we will move on with our reports. Madam County Clerk, we have a couple items for you.
So what I have on the agenda tonight seems like very minor housekeeping things that are very low importance compared to what we've been through. I'm very proud to be a Woodford County citizen, to know that we're cared for and I thank you all for all your hard work. Lived here all my life and I don't plan to leave it.
Amen.
The first item that I have is the HARP Enterprises' maintenance invoice. This is a periodic maintenance fee that HARP Enterprises charges. As you can imagine, the maintenance is necessary for the most optimal, accurate use of these voting machines. This maintenance process includes the calibration of all the machines, the checking for accuracy of reading ballots and any and all the adjustments required for the overall best operations of our voting machines. This $9,640 invoice includes new drives that are necessary for all ballot information to be downloaded and the verity keys, which is used for part of these downloads in setting the machines prior to in the election, in the amount of $9,640.
And Madam Clerk, we did preface that in our budget and finance committee, so I don't anticipate any questions. So if there's a motion to approve, same. Motion by Squire Taylor, second by Squire Gill. All those in favor, please vote and signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. The motion carries.
Thank you very much. Secondly, I have a request to increase the amount of money that we have in our cash drawers. My request this evening is to increase our cash drawer to $100 solely for the purpose of being more efficient in our vehicle transactions. We start our cash drawers daily with a $50 cash balance. With more and more of our transactions, we're receiving $150 bills. I don't know if you've noticed, when you go to your ATM, you don't get small denominations anymore. So these large bills are showing up daily. We're going to the bank to break these large bills for far more often than we need to be going, which is very time-consuming. So if this request is approved, I do propose to make two separate checks tomorrow when I'm preparing the check made payable to the fiscal court for the excess fee payment for the month of March. As a point of reference, March is our highest revenue month of the year due to all the farm tags, the heavyweight equipment plate renewals and the fleets that come due. The excess fee check from our March revenue will be $153,000. And I'm asking for permission to decrease this amount by $600 so I can increase all the cash drawers to $100. And if this request is granted, this order will be presented to my auditors as to why I will be cashing a $600 check in order to distribute an additional $50 cash in each cash drawer.
Is there a motion to approve the county clerk's request to increase the cash limit to 100 from $50 in each cash drawer in the county clerk's office?
Motion.
Motion by Squire Varner, second by Squire Gill. We also prefaced this in our prior committee meeting. So there's probably no questions or comments. So all those in favor, please vote and signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. The motion carries unanimously.
Thank you very much.
Thank you so much, Madam Clerk. I'd just like to make one note on the flood report. Another thing that happened, you know, humans are not the only ones displaced. Many, many, many animals that live in the homes of these humans are also displaced. Emily Katner in the animal control office, animal care and control office, has been tremendous in taking in those animals and supporting those families with that. Thank you, Emily. And she has room. Thank you.
Living out that care, Judge.
That's right. Living out the care. Madam, Mr. EMS Director, we have also gone over your training agreement for the emergency medical services as you presented. So I'd entertain a motion to approve that agreement in the amount of $10,000 for paramedic training.
Motion.
Motion by Squire Taylor, second by Squire Carl. Any questions for the director?
Yes, we've been wondering if we could go ahead and get them to approve the transfer for the next court meeting from one of our line items we have in our budget now to go ahead and pay that invoice on the 22nd.
So what we'll do is, we have a motion on the table to approve the agreement. All those in favor, please vote and signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. The motion carries. We also need to approve any transfer related there, too. Motion by Squire Gill, second by Squire Carl. All those in favor, vote and signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. The motion carries.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Director Bailey. We've got some good news. We have Linda DeRosa from the Jack Jewett House. Linda? Thank you for joining us.
Oh, my pleasure. That's hard to follow. I would like to invite everybody on a happy note
Yes.
to join us at the grand reopening of the Jack Jewett House Historic Site on April the 19th, Saturday at 2:00 PM. Jack himself will be there to tell his story and will be giving tours of the house and have cake and music by the Will Paget Trio. And I think we all need a happy note right now. And I have to say, I am new to Woodford County. And I am just constantly amazed at the grit and determination of the people here. And you have my utmost admiration. Thank you.
Thank you, Linda. We really appreciate that. And thank you for all your work at the Jack Jewett House. We're very excited to open the house and have a season, April 19th at 2:00 PM. Thank you, thank you. And you're more than welcome to be excused, Linda, if you need. Are there any other reports to come before the court? Any other agency or department wishing to report to the court? Seeing none, the general orders and unfinished business? The claims, the bills to be paid by this court are before you. Are there any questions or comments on any of the bills to be paid? Does anybody have any objections to the bills to be paid as presented? Seeing no objections, the bills shall be paid as presented. There are no transfers at this time, although I will note that we just approved the transfer for the EMS training agreement. But we need a motion to ratify the March 2026-2025 email approval of the transfers. Motion by Squire Brown.
Second.
Second by Squire Gentry. All those in favor of ratification, saying please vote and signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. And the motion carries. We also need to ratify the March 29th-2025 email approval of the quarter-end receipt transfers.
Motion.
Motion by Squire Gentry, second by Squire Taylor. All those in favor, please vote and signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. And the motion carries. We do not have a personnel order at this time, but I would remind everyone that Director Chandler's motion about Johnny, Brian, and Russ and Emily at Woodford EM will require us to do a personnel order for a status change. We have that pre-approved. We can probably go on until the next meeting. But we may require an email approval of same in the time period between our meetings just to make sure that everything is covered up. But we'll discuss that with our human resources management and communicate with the court. The next item is a proposed second reading of Budget Amendment Number Three, Ordinance 2025-04, realizing unbudgeted receipts in the amount of $505,574.56. I need a motion to approve, same. Motion by Squire Gill, second by Squire Brown. All those in favor, please vote and signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Mr. County Attorney, sir.
Yes, Judge, this will be a summary reading of that budget amendment to increase the receipts for the following funds. And they, in particular, those are your road fund, jail fund, federal grants, sheriff's asset forfeiture and opioid settlement monies totaling $505,574.56. Appropriations are increased by a like amount for road, jail, federal grants, sheriff's asset forfeiture and opioid settlement. This being a second reading, this budget amendment is final, although it does need to be published in summary form within 30 days.
Thank you, Mr. County Attorney.
Thank you, Judge.
We also need to have the proposed second reading, the second reading of Ordinance 2024-05, a zoning map amendment for the Burnworth Properties LLC 5695 McCracken Pike. That's a preliminary development plan for the same address for an R2 CO1B1 to a B1. Motion by Squire Gentry.
Second.
Second by Squire Taylor. Are there any questions? Seeing none, all those in favor, please vote and signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. The motion carries unanimously. Mr. County Attorney, sir.
Yes, Judge, this would also be a second reading, a summary second reading of an ordinance this time relating to the zoning map amendment and preliminary development plan Burnworth Properties LLC 5695 McCracken Pike, R2 CO1B1 to B1. The planning commission having recommended that that amendment be approved, this fiscal court having reviewed the record by your unanimous vote to accept that recommendation and approve the requested zone change based upon a summary of evidence and findings, facts and recommendations adopted and submitted by the commission. So be it ordained by this fiscal court that that amendment is approved. This, too, Judge, needs to be published in summary form within 30 days, but is otherwise final.
Be it ordained. Thank you, Mr. County Attorney, sir.
Thank you, Judge.
I need to bring up an item of unfinished business that is not on the agenda. And that is the discussion of the committee work on in-family conveyances and the zoning text amendment that we have previously discussed. Is there any objection to allowing that discussion to happen as a part of unfinished business? Are there any objections to same? Seeing no objections. Let me say that at our last meeting, procedurally, what happened is there was a motion to approve the recommendation of the committee, the ordinance committee. That was tabled by a motion to table that passed. So that motion is on the table. Squire Gentry, being a union man and having some parliamentary procedure expertise, reminded me that a motion on the table must be taken up and acted upon or shall fail if it is not taken up at the next regular meeting of said body. In this case, that would be this meeting. My understanding and talking to members of the fiscal court, number one, we want the public to know that this issue is alive. It is one that we are working on and discussing and actively taking public input and working on educating the public, understanding the issue ourselves and working towards making a decision. No matter what happens with this issue, it is still one that the fiscal court needs to bring resolution to, work on, and have a plan forward as we go forward. So before we move forward, I wanted to make sure that we emphasize that regardless of whether the motion on the table is not acted upon and the item lays upon the table, which would ultimately lead to it being lost, that that is not the end of either the discussion or action of the fiscal court. In fact, I believe that we should go ahead and preemptively schedule an ordinance committee meeting prior to our next fiscal court meeting. And if necessary, if there's consensus and preparation to act, that we could even meet in a special meeting at some time, if necessary. So that being the procedural status of that piece of unfinished business, let me open up the floor for discussion on in-family conveyances and the proposed text and zoning amendment for Sections Two and Seven. Squire Gill, you're recognized, ma'am.
Thank you. I think since the motion was tabled at the last meeting, we should not take the motion from the table because if, then we would have to just vote. I don't believe there would be any discussion allowed. And I feel like there needs to be discussion. So I personally would like to see a new motion. And maybe not this meeting, but soon, because I just don't think we can delay this issue indefinitely.
Very well said, and I appreciate your additional parliamentary knowledge of the lack of a debatable motion. But I do agree with you that we, as a fiscal court, need to bring resolution. I think that there is, there is good work being done. There is consensus being worked on. And so I think that it is proper to make sure that folks know that just because this action will not be taken today, that that does not preclude any action in the future. So let me continue to open up the floor for any discussions or questions thereon. Squire Gentry, you're recognized.
I agree with Squire Gill. We need to probably come up with a new motion, hopefully next meeting.
Thank you, Squire Gentry. Other questions or comments related to this issue? So there will be no action thereon, so the record will reflect that the motion on the table shall be lost. I apologize for not leading with that as well in the last meeting, but I do appreciate Squire Gentry bringing that and you clarifying that, Squire Gill. You're recognized, ma'am.
I would like to see this come up before our next fiscal court meeting, at least to come to a recommendation. I think we were really close the last time and that it might not take a lot to come up with a final, you know, solution that everybody, not, maybe not everybody, but that the majority could be in favor of.
And I could make a recommendation that whatever proposal that we would like to present, that we have that, as we've worked on in writing, something that we can disseminate to the body and to the public as necessary so that everybody can understand. I want to say that it is, we have moved very cautiously, very conservatively. You could even say slowly. But one of the things that we have not done is we have been, we have not been, we have not worked on this out of the sight of the public. This has been open and transparent and accessible. We've taken public comment. We've spoken to numerous people. Each magistrate I know has. We've each taken multiple meetings and calls and emails and written comments and all the like. We still have our info@woodfordcountyky.gov email for any additional comments. We're receiving comments on it. The public is engaged and we are listening. So that's the one thing that I want to make sure folks know. Any other additional comments regarding that piece of unfinished business? Seeing none, we'll move to the new business. We have a facility use request for the Woodford County rodeo. Some say the greatest rodeo that any county has put on in the universe, but that could be objective, subjective, excuse me. We need to approve the facility use request for the horse ring at the county park on August 15th and 16th of this year for the Woodford County rodeo. Squire Varner is moot.
Second.
Squire Gentry is seconding. All those in favor, please vote and signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. And that motion carries unanimously. We have the Salvation Army eye screening event. And we need to approve the facility use request for the exhibition hall at the Woodford County Park on the fairgrounds for August 1st and 2nd, 2025. And that's, again, that's the Salvation Army eye screening event.
Motion.
Motion by Squire Gentry, second by Squire Carl. Seeing no discussion, all those in favor, please vote and signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. That motion carries unanimously. We need to approve the... We need to approve this training incentive for Squire Gentry for calendar year '25 pursuant to statute, Kara 645275, subsection six. Motion, Squire Carl, second, Squire Varner. All those in favor, please vote and signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. The motion carries. Madam Clerk, in all that business, have we missed anything? And indeed, we do. We need to approve the sheriff's quarterly report for the quarter ending as presented, excuse me. Is there a motion for same? Motion for Squire Brown, second, Squire Gill. All those in favor of approval of same, please vote and signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. And that motion also carries unanimously. Madam Clerk? All right. Announcements, magistrates, Squire Gill?
I have nothing, thank you.
Squire Brown?
Nothing, Judge.
Thank you, sir. Squire Taylor?
Nothing, Judge, thanks.
Squire Gentry?
Yeah, there's a lot going on down at the river, want to thank all the emergency management, Freeman, just everybody involved. It, it was crazy to see, I've seen floods, I've never seen a flood like that, it's very eye-opening, and like I said, it's just great that everybody can come together so fast and just appreciate everybody.
Thank you, Squire Gentry. Squire Varner, sir?
Thank you, Judge, I just want to echo Squire Gentry's sentiments, the, this, the whole team has done an absolute fantastic job in difficult circumstances, so thank you all.
Thank you, Squire Varner. Squire Carl?
Yeah, just, we're in good hands. I mean, and it's a good feeling, it is, it's a good feeling to know that. I mean, and everybody, I hope they know how they are, we truly just know that it's taken care of. Yeah, it's nice. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. County Attorney, sir?
Judge, just very briefly, I've been privileged to sit in this corner for the past 43 and a half years, and I've seen the fiscal court have to deal with all kinds of disasters and emergencies, and I want to commend everyone for what they've done in response to this historic flooding. As was alluded to, we're so thankful and fortunate not to have had any fatalities and tragedies of that sort to, to deal with, but that doesn't make it any less devastating and heartbreaking for those who have been impacted by it. We all know someone or some people who have been, Judge, you for sure do, we have a valued and cherished worker in my office, and when you see the emotional toll it takes on them, not just what's already happened, but what they're facing, it, it's just, it really is crushing to see what they're going through. So, I commend Jordan and those who have been so quick to get things on the website, to try to help those in need and, and what Drew's doing and what everyone, all the, all of our agencies are doing in response to this. It takes a united effort and, and we're seeing that, and I know it will be appreciated and helpful to those many, many in need. Just as an example, we recently changed the name of animal control to animal care and control, and that's...